If everybody would come to order for a public hearing. Let me begin by welcoming everybody who's turned out tonight. It's really great, I think, to speak on behalf of all of us to see so many people taking interest in the project that we're engaged in right now. We have members of the Joint Redistricting Committee from the Legislature, it's a Joint House and Senate Committee. And I'm Charles Trump. I bring you tidings, good tidings, from the Senate President, who is not here tonight. Craig Blair's in Charleston, but he asked me to express to everybody his wish that he could have been here tonight, that we see everybody, but he has official business in Charleston. It's my pleasure and honor to introduce the two other senators, members of the Senate, who are here tonight. And then I'm going to hand the mic over to Chairman Howe, and he's going to introduce the members of the House of Delegates who are here. But to my left are two senators from Putnam County. They're both members of the Senate Redistricting Committee. And we were talking further, or earlier, I was asking which one of them would win the award for farthest travel to this event? And we decided that it's a tie. They live not too far apart, on different sides of Putnam County, but probably the same distance here. To my immediate left is Senator Glenn Jeffers. Glenn is a senator from Putnam County. And to his left is Senator Eric Talk, also from Putnam County. Eric is the chairman of the Senate Delegates Committee. And, you know, it's, you know, to me, anyway, it means a lot that both these gentlemen who live very far away, it's over 300 miles, I'm sure, probably maybe closer to 300, I'm not sure, to where, to where they live, that they would travel all the way up here to attend this public hearing, and I'm grateful for that. Let me hand the microphone to Chairman Howe, and he will introduce the members of the House of Delegates who are here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Delegate Howler represents Mineral County, 56th District of Mineral County, and I am the House Chair for Redistricting. Committee members we have here today, we have Delegate Statler, who is out of Bond County, Delegate Householder here in Berkeley, Paul Espinoza is from Jefferson, Delegate Rowland, who represents part of Antrim, part of Mineral. They all serve on the Redistricting Committee. We also have here, from the House side, Delegate Forst, and he's right there, he's in Berkeley County, Delegate Forst, who's also Berkeley County, Delegate Barrett here in Martinsburg, Delegate Hardy, Berkeley County, Delegate Clark, Jefferson County, Delegate Doyle, Jefferson County, and Delegate Reed, which is part of Berkeley and part of Morgan. We also have former delegates Kung, Cowles, and Mike Folton just walked in, and John Overton. All right, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. I have the signup sheet for people who signed up and wished to speak and address the committee. Let me give you a little bit of just general background, and probably everybody here knows this, but my apologies, I'll do it for anybody who is unsure of what the purpose we're engaged in right now. Our state constitution requires that every 10 years following the Decennial Census of the United States, the legislature is required to draw districts for West Virginia's congressional delegation, the State House of Delegates, and the State Senate. And probably everybody here knows and has read, sadly, for the next 10 years, West Virginia will lose a member of its delegation to the United States House of Representatives. For the next 10 years, we will have two congresspersons instead of three, which we've had for the last decade and actually longer than that. And that's a function of, you know, our, West Virginia's overall population alongside the population of the nation as a whole, and the other states, which have, many of which have enjoyed pretty significant population growth. So that's the process that we're engaged in. For anybody who's interested in legislative process, redistricting works like the handling of any other legislative issue. There will be bills, bills that are introduced at a time when the legislature is in session and it's in order or appropriate for people to introduce bills and for the two houses of the legislature to consider them. And a redistricting bill, you know, we think of maps because that's sort of how we visualize what we do, but they're actually bills, and they work like any other bills. In other words, a bill to become law, a redistricting plan to become law, has to be in the form of a bill, and it has to pass in identical form through both houses of the legislature, and then be signed into law by the government. So we think of maps, but it's also legislation, just like ordinary legis, any other legislation. We received, last week, finally, the, at least, publicly released data from the United States Census Bureau. So we can hold public hearings around the state to hear from people about their views, opinions, feelings about it all, and what they want their districts to look like, or they don't want them to look like. And to date, we've been having to do it without really being able to produce any maps, even to, you know, as demonstrative exhibits. But that's soon going to change. And the legislature has a software vendor that will allow us, now that that data has been released, to start drawing maps using the software and the data. And I think that will, I'm hoping that will, facilitate public discussion. But it's a required process that we're engaged in, and so we want to, tonight, hear from you. And those that didn't sign up to speak, I've already told a couple people, I'm going to call on people on a random basis, so, I'm just kidding. We have, looks like, about 10 people who signed up to speak, and we're eager to hear. For everybody's benefit, this public hearing is being recorded, we'll have audio and a visual recording of it, and we're going to archive. There'll be members of the legislature's redistricting committee who couldn't make it here to Martinsburg for this, but who will want to hear what you had to say tonight, and it'll be easy for them to do so. And I hope, some of the other public hearings that we've had have already been posted to YouTube. So if you have somebody, if you run into somebody who's interested and said, oh, Donald, I wish I hadn't missed that, they'll have to miss it. They can probably within a week or so be able to view it and hear it on YouTube. So with that, let's go ahead and get started. The first person who signed up to speak, and we'll ask you to come to the mic and try to speak to the mic so we can make a good recording of everything that everybody says. The first person is Bradley Knoll. Bradley Knoll, the floor is yours.
First of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you and giving my suggestions. But no matter what I say, I'm convinced that you will do the opposite. A district should be considering high school districts. When you draw the lines, you should consider the high school districts because students and families and people need to be represented by their high school in the area that they live in. The district should also take into effect natural landmarks such as creeks and mountains. Here in the Panhandle, growth should be considered when thinking about the districts and the lines. Because Berkeley County had the largest growth of any county in the state of West Virginia. So with that being said, we should be considered for the future as well, as having more delegates in other areas. Districts should also be tight and compact. What a district should not be is a jigsaw puzzle, currently like the 60th is. That's all I have to say. Thank you, gentlemen, for listening.
Mr. Knoll, thank you for your remarks. I didn't say this, but, and Mr. Knoll didn't get quite to it, I don't think, what we're going to do is ask everybody to limit his or her remarks to about five minutes, and there's a red light at the podium, but we'll call on if you go over five minutes to signify that you've done so. We may have some time for additional comments after everybody who's signed up to speak. But, Mr. Knoll, thank you for your comments. And I would say, just as a general proposition, I don't think anybody at this table has, there's been no determination yet made of what we're going to do, other than we're going to do our duty to redistrict. And as far as, you know, some, there is no plan, there's no master plan that's been drawn. We're trying to make this an open and transparent process. And, you know, quite frankly, in some of these public hearings, we're, I'm hearing ideas and things raised by people that I had not heard of before or considered before. So don't be too sure that we might not do something that you agree with. You know, it is possible. Okay, the next person signed up to speak is former delegate Larry Compton.
Thank you. The first thing that I wanted to say, and I believe this is important, Chairman Howe and Chairman Trump and members of the Redistricting Committee, it's really impressive what you're doing. Citizen legislators traveling various locations, I think 12 of them, and taking your time and effort to try to come up with a fair system of redistricting. The current redistricting pattern we have now is one that I call a gollywompering roof-goldure district system. And I agree with what I've heard said by many of the constituents of the other hearings, that ideally, even though you have to draw a line somewhere, districts should be compact and include community of interest. In my current situation, the district I live, a couple years ago, one of the ladies who was a good friend of mine in my family, not particularly politically active, but got really upset, approached me at the local Falling Waters Post Office and said, you weren't on the ballot this time. I know that you ran, and I know you won. And I said, well, you must have moved. She says, yeah, a block down, a block down the street. I said, where'd you move to? And she told me, and I said, you moved over the line, even though it was the same community, same zip code, same neighborhood. She got really frustrated and upset about that. And District 59, where I live, is straddled across two counties, bisects two communities, Honeywood and Falling Waters, carves up multiple zip codes. And so I think that as the committee struggles with how to draw these maps, and we're fortunate in the Eastern Panhandle that we're going to pick up some districts because of the growth, unlike most of the rest of West Virginia, as you draw these maps, I think it's important to have as much community of interest as possible, to not bisect communities, municipalities, and if possible, to keep districts in as far as possible within the same county. I think the idea of trying to include as much of a zip code in the district is important, and I really like the idea that was previously mentioned about looking at the high school districts, because that's a real community of interest with the, with the new districting. And with that said, for sure and for certain, may God bless you all real good.
Thank you very much for those remarks and comments, and it's good to see you. Yes. The next person signed up to speak needs no introduction in Berkeley County. He was elected to the West Virginia House of Delegates in 1984 and served longer continuously than any other delegate in the history of the state of West Virginia. And where is John Overton? There he is. John, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you, Charles. It's great to see you all here. I appreciate you making that long trip. This is my third redistricting, except the other three have been on your side of the table. When, I remember, just a decade ago, I was on the Redistricting Committee, and we had similar discussions like this, and I appreciate you all being here for this. I'm here, the crusade that I have had for the last 34 years is to have 100 single-member districts, single-delegate districts. I went back and found the bill that, the last bill that I got passed in the last year I served was 19, was 2018, was House Bill 2004, it was 4,002. And I'm glad that we are finally coming around to having 100 single-delegate districts, and that after this is over, that we will have 100 single-delegate districts. When I was first elected, as Charles said, in 1984, Conawla County was a multi-member district, the whole county. And what that meant was that in Conawla County, you had 12 people serving in one multi-member district. It meant that when the voters went out to vote, they would have 24 people to have to choose their 12 they wanted to vote for. And I remember in 2, in 1992, when we had redistricting, I had a sister that worked at the Civil Rights Division of the Justice Department, and we got somebody from the Civil Rights Division to come to West Virginia. In the South, what had been happening is you would have, say, four districts that were white, and one district that was black, you combine them all together, and you have a five-member district that has a majority all white. And so, and at that time, West Virginia was sort of half between a southern state and a northern state. And so they looked at West Virginia in 1991 to see if maybe we would have a minority, a black minority district. And they could not find any, any part of the state that would allow for that to occur. And so what they did is they created a minority-influenced district. And in the process, they took that 12-member district and broke it up into a seven-member district, a four-member district, and a one-member district. The one-member district was the minority-influenced district that Charleston is representing, that is represented by that district in Charleston. Since that time, that Conawla County has been broken up further, to the point that now you have a four-member district, a three-member district, and four single-delegate districts. I'm a great believer in going door-to-door, in getting to know the constituents that you represent. And when you have a single-delegate district, you know, that means about 18,000 people, you can do it. You can get to know most of the people. You can go door-to-door in most of the areas, and I think you have much better representation. You have that block of 18,000 people knowing exactly who is their representative, and I think you have much greater communication and accountability. I enjoyed using a mail-in newsletter to everybody in my district every January, and I couldn't have done it if it was a, much, if it was a huge multi-member district. So that is what I'm here to encourage you, to make sure that you follow, that you don't change the intent of House Bill 4,002, and that you maintain the 100 single-delegate districts. I want to mention one or two other things. In the district that I represented, it was basically supposed to be 18,000 people. By the end of that 10-year cycle, it was up to about 23,000 or 24,000 people. There were probably 5,000 or 6,000 more people than should have been. And so I remember, I guess it was, it was a decade or two ago, Speaker Bob Kiss, he looked at this and he said, you know, that's not fair. And so there's a certain degree of deviation that you can have when you do a single-delegate district. It can be, it can probably be, you know, something like 500. And what Bob Kiss did during that cycle was he said, we're going to have you in Eastern Panhandle, and your district have instead of 18,000, we're going to have 17,500 or 17,000, knowing that a year or two later, the population would have continued to grow to the point it would be 18,000, it would be 19,000, and then 10 years later, it would be up to, you know, 23,000, 24,000. So I hope that you'll use this as a way to do this. I appreciate the challenges that you have, especially in your efforts to have a, in the congressional district. And since then, I appreciate the challenges you have to do to make that happen. I've served for 10 years with David McKinley, when he was in the House of Delegates. I spent my last two years about three feet from Carol Miller, when she was a majority whip, and I was Speaker Potem. I actually served, I got to know Alex Rooney, when he was, would attend court state legislative conferences, when he was a member of the Virginia, or the Maryland State Senate. So it, appreciate the work that you're doing, and I would just plead to make sure that you keep that 100 single-delegate districts, and then maybe 10 years from now, you can have 34 single-senate districts, something to think about in the future. Appreciate you coming over to Eastern Panhandle to listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you, and on behalf of all of us, great to see you again. The next person signed up to speak is David Valente. Mr. Valente, welcome. The floor is yours.
Thank you all for hosting this event. I really appreciate it. My name is David Valente. I am the former Chair of the Libertarian Party of West Virginia, current Vice Chair of the Libertarian Party of the Eastern Panhandle, and on the Libertarian National Committee representing Region 5, which West Virginia is part of. This is my fourth state that I've been a part of a redistricting process. My mother was a Chief of Staff for Democratic State Senator in New Mexico, been to Georgia and Virginia. So I, you know, every state does it differently. Every state has its own process. I understand there's some good, there's some bad. You know, Delegate Kung eloquently said that, you know, it should be clear, compact, concise districts. That should be your goal. I don't think that's going to be much of a problem here in the Eastern Panhandle, but I do think that this will be the fight when we get down to where previous multi-member districts were at. So keep that in mind. I tend to see the states that are most dysfunctional are the ones that use this process to reward the bunch. And, you know, I like to say, I speak for, you know, some of the underrepresented communities, the Libertarians, the Greens, at this point, the Democrats, you know, just to make sure that, you know, we're all here, especially the non-affiliated voters, one of the largest growing blocks of voters in this state, that don't align to one party or another. So if you're planning on drawing a district based on voter registration, remember, there's not a lot, you know, not everyone in this state is a Democrat or Republican. You know, we need to have communities of interest represented. You know, a lot of times, there's great laws that exploit this to a political advantage. I will just point out that the redistricting process 10 years ago that has a supermajority for the Republican Party, both, you know, both houses, was drawn by Democrats. So remember that the political winds, the winds can change. So drawing lines to political advantage now may not be beneficial 10 years from now. And finally, I hope, this is my fervent hope, is that this is the last time we have a legislative, a legislature-driven process. The redistricting, redistricting process should be driven by the citizens. It should be a citizen-led commission, citizen-served commission. You know, this is a process that, we shouldn't have our legislators picking the districts that they represent. It should be the citizens picking their legislators. And if citizens are, you know, drawn into these, you know, gerrymandered districts, we're not doing that, we're not serving the people. So it is my fervent hope that one of you or someone in the legislature puts forward a bill or allows us to do citizen referenda to end this process of legislator-driven redistricting and making it a citizen-led initiative. So I have my time. Thank you so much.
Mr. Valente, thank you very much for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is a distinguished member of the Berkeley County Bar, venerable member of the Berkeley County Bar, Hoy Shingleton.
You could have just said, oh, Charles, that's being delicate. I want to thank every, my name is Hoy Shingleton. I want to thank all of you for coming up here. Spacey goes from Putnam County. My brother-in-law lives in Scott Depot. I want to speak about congressional redistricting. And I know we're losing one, and that's going to maybe be the toughest thing you all have to do, is how to do it. There's two ways to do it, north-south, or east-west, it seems to me. I am standing in favor of a north-south relationship. Right now, we're a member of the second congressional district with Conawla County, and I think part of your county. And I think it amounts to a disadvantage to the Eastern Panhandle in this respect. A lot of the boards and commissions, ones that are standing and meet all the time, others that meet only once or twice on a specific issue, almost always have the requirement that so many members of that board or commission have to be residents of a certain congressional district. And my practice is an administrative law practice, the PSC, the Health Department, the DEP, and some other things. I have dealt with the issue that, that a lot of the decision-makers, and I'm not talking about the legislature, because it's done on population, but a lot of the decision-makers, either in the government or on these boards, are not from, enough of them are not from up in this area, these 80, 10 counties that comprise the greater Eastern Panhandle, and our views don't get fully aired sometimes. I think that, whereas even those that live in Putnam County, if someone from Conawla Counties that weren't board, you all have a right to, I know you might fight amongst yourselves on certain local things, but, but you could say that about Clay, and Raleigh, and Lincoln, that whole area has the same culture, has the same history. And our history is obviously a little bit different up here. But with the growing area that we're in, I think it's vitally important that we have more individuals from these counties with the opportunity to be appointed to these boards. And quite frankly, with Conawla County is always going to be the default, because it's easy to get up and have breakfast and drive down to the Capitol for a meeting. It's hard for us to do it, but I think if more people were asked up here, I think more people would serve. And I think that will result in a real benefit to those of us who live in the Eastern Panhandle. So I thank you very much.
Shingleton, thank you very much. We're happy for your comments. Okay, the next speaker signed up is, I'm going to say that's Sherri Rabin.
That works.
How close was it?
You're pretty close.
Well, if I mispronounce it, I apologize. Welcome, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate the opportunity tonight to speak to you, and I appreciate your service to the state. I know it takes quite a bit of effort in order to do your job, so I'm appreciative. I know it takes quite a bit of effort in order to do your job, so I'm appreciative. What I have to say tonight is that unfortunately, West Virginia has experienced gerrymandering for over eighty years. And I urge the legislature to undo this gerrymandering by drawing compact contiguous districts that limits growing up counties. I advocate that the House of Delegates should have one hundred single-member districts, exemplifying one person, one vote. The West Virginia House is one of the few bodies in the nation that allows the use of multi-member districts. This practice has been used as a weapon to split areas. As an example, a voter in Morgantown gets to vote for five members of the House of Delegates, whereas voters in the Eastern Panhandle are all in single-member districts and are only able to vote for one delegate. This practice is unfair, and I urge you to adopt one hundred single-member districts.
Ms. Ralston, thank you very much for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Tina Renner. Ms. Renner, thank you. Did I say it right?
Yes.
Welcome. The floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Tina Renner. I am a long-term resident of Jefferson County, West Virginia. I'm very proud of that, and I'm also a Jefferson County School West driver. Thank you guys for coming. I know what distance is, so thank you for coming all this way. I would like to say that I want to keep the communities together, because the communities are families now, and we've come such a long way. And fortunately, I got thrown into the limelight this year, and I have a great community that's behind me. And I just want to say, things happen for a reason, and I think Jefferson County is strong. I think they're amazing people. We're basically family now. Please keep the mountain family together. Please keep all of us together, and see if you can keep the communities to be within the, their districts. Don't, don't take them out of their own counties, if that's any way possible, if that's making sense. And by the way, did I miss the pledge of allegiance? Because I thought I'd been here the whole time. Did we not, do we not do that here?
We did.
Okay. Thank you all.
Sherri, what is it?
On TV.
Tina, I think you have been here all the time, and we did not start with that, and we should. And so, without objections, let's do it now. You want to lead us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tina, thank you for pointing that out. And while you were talking, while you were talking, there were a couple of people that held up some signs. And were they related to your remarks about the preservation of communities?
Yes. We're all, we're all families.
So, I'm going to just ask Ben and Jackie to wheel the camera over there, so that our archive of this public hearing will include at least, you know, so that they can, others who watch the video of this will see this sign. This is not, I will say, it's not an official meeting. It's a public hearing, and to non-lawyers, it may not, that may not be a big distinction. But we don't have a quorum of a committee here. We're not permitted under our rules to take any action tonight, other than our fundamental purpose, which is to hear from, just hear from the folks who turned out to address us and share information with us. So Tina, thank you, and thank you for the reminder that it should have been unnecessary. And I'm, I'm a little bit embarrassed about that, and I apologize. But no, that's okay. And I'm happy to have been a participant in it, and to have had you alert us to our deficiency in the commencement of this public hearing. The next person signed up to speak is Elliot Simon. There's Elliot. Welcome, Mr. Simon. The floor is yours.
Why, thank you, Senator Trump. My name's Elliot Simon, and I live in that zip code. I'd actually like to expand upon what Tina Renner just said. And also, I'd like to reiterate what we said about the single-member districts, which former Delegate Overton has been a champion of for all these years. Now, I live up on that same mountain, and there are two halves of that mountain. And the reason why is because one half is in one legislative district, and the other half is in another legislative district. Now, in, to my mind, we're all West Virginians, so we all want to be represented down in Charleston. But all politics is local, so we all need local representation. And when you split the mountain in half and put it into two separate districts, it has the effect of diluting the influence of that community. And it has also the effect of suppressing the vote. Now, there are three precincts, Seventeen, Twenty-One A, and Twenty-One B up on that mountain. It's many thousands of people, and it, those are the precincts that are the very furthest from Charleston. To the best of my knowledge, nobody from those precincts has ever served in the House of Delegates. There's a reason for that, because you can't get somebody behind a candidate to represent us out there. So, in, in my mind, we need to bring the mountain together. In fact, those are also the precincts that are on the other side of Shenandoah, which is the eastern, you know, east of the Shenandoah. Those, that's the only, those are the only people in West Virginia that are east of the Shenandoah. And I've heard people say that they feel more like they're part of Virginia than West Virginia at times, because of the geography. So, the geography, I think, demands that we put the mountain together into one district, no matter how you slice it, so to speak. And so, I'd appreciate it if this committee were to consider that, and the people on the mountain, I'm sure, would be greatly appreciative of it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Simon, thank you very much for your remarks and comments. The next person who has signed up to speak is Thornton Cooper. Mr. Cooper, welcome. You've made a long trip as well. The floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Thornton Cooper. I live in Conawla County, the county that lost the most population. It's good to be in Berkeley County, the county that got, got the most population. I have been involved in redistricting for the last five census, nineteen eighty, nineteen ninety, two thousand, two thousand and ten, and now here, this one. I've supported single-member districts for about forty years. I got single-member awards in my own hometown of South Charleston back in nineteen eighty-three, and I'm pushing for single-member districts, for the House of Delegates, ever since then. I'm a Democrat, so I hear some people, Republicans, saying, well, Republicans are responsible for this. Well, you finally did get a bill passed by, with Republican-led legislature. But don't think that only Republicans support single-member districts. So, I've been involved, if you look at the night, the twenty-ten census, I was involved in proceedings that challenged the House of Delegates Redistricting Plan, the State Senate Redistricting Plan, and the Congressional District Plan. I submitted, and I filed a copy of it several meetings ago, my plan that I, that I prepared ten years ago for one hundred single-member districts, which I filed back in August ten years ago. I supported a plan for congressional redistricting. I supported a plan for state senate redistricting. So since I'm already lived in five minutes, let me say a few things. First, as I, as I mentioned at the hearing in Mont, in Montague County, Montague County's also, its population's gone up. It is almost exactly one-seventeenth of the state's population. In my opinion, under the state constitution, it is entitled to be a state senate district. And when I, you know, submit my plan, Montague County will be a state senate district, and nobody from outside voting for people in Montague, and vice versa. Berkeley County is an interesting position. I will submit a plan, the usual way would be, where you say, well, okay, it's one-seventeenth of the state's population, you put all of Jefferson, then enough people to make one-seventeenth, and then you put the rest of Berkeley, and you put it with Morgan, and a little bit of Hampshire. That's the way I'll submit. But there is a, there are two ways to do this. You could, because of the, you have so many more people than one-seventeenth of the population, you could actually have Jefferson in the southern part of Berkeley, and all of Morgan in part of Hampshire. You could do that. You could actually have a, a part, make Berkeley County the, say, the northern, I don't know how to be in territory. I'm just saying, I just want you all to think about that. So it is a possibility. I know that Berkeley County keeps growing and growing. I just want you to think that as a possibility. I've been glad to see some old friends, John Overton, Hoy Shingleton, John's a one that I've known for decades. I've already come up with a, you rest the redistricting plan, because we have, I have the county figures. I use something called Dave's Redistricting, which is how I prepared my plan ten years ago. It doesn't yet have the voting, the voting district, that is the precincts. But I do have the county districts. So Friday, I worked up a plan. You'll be getting that by next week. And, and I can sure, Hoy, he and I are on the same page. We, I've been, by the way, I've been trying to keep this, everything to the south of Maryland. I consider that the Eastern Panhandle, but I know you all say, well, it's only the three on the end, and then the rest is the Potomac Islands. Whichever way you characterize it, I have been trying to keep that whole area in one congressional district. I mean, I was involved in port battle and a redistricting plan thirty years ago. Every time there's a census, I have tried to put everybody to, in West Virginia, who lives to the south of Maryland, the same district. And again, that's what I'll do this time. So, I just want to make those points, and it's good to see you.
Mr. Cooper, thank you. Did you bring a map with you of your proposed congressional redistricting?
I haven't actually made it. I mean, I've actually, I figured it out Friday. You know, get to see next week.
Well, I'm just going to ask, because I'm dying to know, where do you, are you saying it will draw an east-west line that more or less divides the state into a north and south? Is that sort of?
I want to, I put this one, if you remember the Logan hearing.
Yeah. You showed me one that you had done ten years before, too.
Yeah, well, that, yeah, but that's, that's, you haven't seen my congressional redistricting plan, but you, from ten years ago, although it was when Senator Riker was there. It is actually on the citizen submission. But with that going into the specifics, you always like to double-check, you know, it's always double-check. Never, you don't submit something the same day you come up with, you look at it again. But the basic point I made at the Logan hearing is that you people, so many people at the hearings talk about north-south and east-west. That's not how I, I see West Virginia. My feeling is, it is southwest and northeast. To me, I see the polls as, and this is now a big center population. You know, Conawla County's dropping, and, you know, Jefferson, Berkeley, and Morgan are going up. So the way I see it is more southwest. So, on one hand, you have Tomic River, and then on the other hand, you have the Tug Fork of the Big Sandy River. So, my plan, with that going into specifics, the people that are closest to the Tug Fork River in one district, which would be congressional district one, the people here will be in congressional district two. I try to combine the people who are the farthest south, the people who are the farthest southwest, and the people who are the farthest west, and I accomplish that. It's not perfect, it's not beautiful, but it is very close to numerical perfection.
All right. Well, we're, we're all eager to see it. I certainly am, and for folks who don't know, I think Thornton has actually been to every one of our hearings, maybe the one, but in all parts of this state. And he, choose credit, he has, you know, different points that he makes with us, and each one, all on the general subject, but I'm eager to see a map. If you've got one that you want to pitch. Okay, Thornton, thank you. The next speaker and the last one who had signed up to speak on this list is Karen Buck. Ms. Buck, welcome. The floor is yours.
Thank you for having us all here tonight. Appreciate all the travel time and so forth. I'm from Shannondale, I'm up on the mountain. And we are in zip code two-five-four-two-five. Our mountain, our community is growing like crazy. I've got four brand new houses just on my road, just this summer. It is going like gangbusters. You can't buy a lot in Shannondale unless you're, you know, got deep pockets these days. I would like to suggest, again, as Mr. Simon and Ms. Renner did, that you keep the, the Shannondale community in one delegate district. Not only that, keep the mountain in one delegate district, keep the zip code two-five-four-two-five in one district. We have a very unique community. I've often said that, living up in Shannondale, it's kind of like the Wild West with pizza. And other times, it's like the tightest-knit family that you can have. We all look out for each other, we look out for each other's kids, we are family. We know, we know each other very, very well. We would like to insist on that type of a representation in one district, just because of our uniqueness, and somebody who will really get to know us and, and really fight for us. Shannondale, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, is the largest contiguous community in West Virginia. We know the power of our vote, and we do not want it diluted. We feel very strongly about that, about having the district split the way it is, having the mountain split the way it is. We need, really need to keep it together. And also, if we, if we did delineate this district by zip code, what better way to be open and honest and, and free from all, you know, whatever lines drawn on a map that people don't agree with? Why don't you just put the zip code in the district? To me, that would, that would, that would say it all. That would be totally clear, and, and everybody would see that, you know, that's what I got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Buck, for your comment. Now, the list that I have doesn't include anybody else who had signed up to speak, but we have had, and maybe this is the case here, the list gets pulled from the table out front and brought into us, and sometimes people arrive after that occurs. So, we've got time, we're, you know, we're only an hour in, really. If there's anybody who wants to, if there's anybody here who wants to speak, who maybe hasn't had the opportunity yet. All right? I see a hand in the back. Please come forward. I'm sorry, David? Some, was somebody, had somebody raised a hand to speak? Yes, you're, come on forward, and please speak into the mic. Go ahead and tell us your name, and, and then you can, the floor is yours.
My name is Ken Mattson, registered Republican in Brooklyn County. Thank you for all coming. Thank you very much for showing up. I'm not going to repeat a lot of the good points everyone came up here and discussed. There are a lot of really good points. But I wanted to mention something that some people didn't. Perception. As a law enforcement officer, as a judicial lawyer, judge, and as an elected political figure, perception is everything to the public, whether good or whether bad. The perception that most see, we do not want to see elected officials choose their voters. We choose our We choose our elected officials. And the perception that we hear on the radio, and one local host said that what happened ten years ago, that the Democrats did to the Republicans, that you should do the same thing to them, enact political revenge, now I'm paraphrasing that word. We didn't elect you to go to Charleston to enact political revenge. We enacted you to make the state better to work in, better to live in, and make our lives better in West Virginia. Some people may be influenced by those words, the elected officials, but I think, again, it comes down to perception. And I feel that the one thing that someone did say is, "A independent committee." Maybe give the idea and into, to form those areas and present them to you. That may be a avenue to go, and that leaves you out of it, in regards to, is it going to be gerrymandered for your benefit? Because that, when we have a, a district that's made up by the people, then let those candidates and or the elected official, that incumbent, present their case, and let the people, that community decide who best represents them. Not that, oh, the incumbent just drew his own line, picked his own voters, he's going to be in for no matter how long, possibly, until he retires or someone else pays a better argument. So, I just want to bring up to you that perception, very important to our society and message of our elected officials and law enforcement judicial, and I think you should take that into consideration. Thank you very much.
Mr. Madsen, thank you very much. We still have time, anybody else? Yeah, I see a hand in the back, I think that is, is that Commissioner Law? Counsel Number Law?
Clark.
Clark, that's right, I have to keep up with the times. Welcome, tell us your full name for our record, Elaine, and the floor is yours.
I'm Elaine Law, I'm the Berkeley County Clerk, and as the clerk, you see transfer fees, and transfer fees, two years ago, was averaging in Berkeley County between five and six hundred thousand dollars a month. Then last year, they were averaging eight hundred thousand dollars a month. Since April, we've had either a million dollar a month or nine hundred thousand dollars a month. Today's the seventeenth, we said five hundred and ten thousand dollars. So, the challenge is, folks, when he was talking about the districts and the situation with the size, the, the growth factor is looking in twenty-twenty-five, of us hitting two hundred thousand, our districts can't have a lot in because they're exploding, absolutely exploding. And if you all want to come up and see our maps, the number of our plaques, and the piles of transfers, I'm more welcome to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mark. Anybody else? Dave, did you have something you wanted to say, or?
Charlie, I just, I would like to have one of you address what the law is on a single-member district, because it seems there's some confusion on that issue in terms of what the law should be, what the law, or at least, maybe I'm going to.
Yeah, no, okay, I don't know, I'll repeat the question, because I don't know that everybody heard it, and I don't know that it'll make it onto our archive if I don't, but I think Dave's question was, what is the law regarding the single-member delegate districts? And it was a law passed by the legislature, Drew W. Overton actually had a copy of the bill with him, it was House Bill Four Thousand Two, passed during regular session of two thousand and eighteen, and so that's, it's in a statute now, and that will be part of, you know, what guides the legislature when it considers a redistricting bill, probably, you know, the last discussion I had with Craig Blair, the President of the Senate, and nothing is in stone yet, so don't lay it down, but the thinking is, probably special session in the middle of October is when the President thought that that might occur, last time we had a talk. Okay, anybody else want to say? We've got, we've got some time, so I'm going to start calling on people who didn't sign up. No, I wouldn't. No, I, I wouldn't do that. Does anybody have one of those brochures that we can hold up? And you have one, okay. Everybody, a bunch of people have got one. Let me say this, I should have said this at the outset, if you didn't get one, please do, because on it is the information by which you can, if you choose to, email additional comments that you have or that others have. It's an email address that goes to the Joint Committee, the website, and there's information on it about how you can submit your own plans, if you want to, and we, we welcome that. We're going to take what we get, Thornton, Thornton Cooper said he's going to send a plan for Congress and maybe others. When we get them, we're going to post them to the website, so that, not just the members of the committee, but the members of a whole legislature, both House and Senate, can see them, make comments on them, so that everybody in the public can see them. You can go to the website and find the right link and open it up and say, "Oh, there's an interesting map, makes sense, drawn by somebody," you know, and it could be, it could relate to anything, House of Delegates districts, State Senate districts, Congressional districts, the mountain zip code in Shannondale, any of it, you know? We want it, and I'm thinking I'm speaking for everybody that serves on the committee. This is not going to be some partisan gerrymander process, we're not doing it. We're going to, and we want input, we want input from the citizens. Ultimately, this government belongs to you, it belongs to the people, it's the people's government, and your voices in how it should be structured, and how it should operate, are what is important. So, that, if you didn't get a brochure, get one, and if there's mechanisms within it that will allow you to give us more information, more, more information is good. Don't get over, you hand your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out.
Come, come to the mic, John, please, so we make sure Jackie's recording can capture what you.
The, in response to the question, House Bill Four Thousand Two, you can, it's just a one-page bill, it's very simple, it just calls out for one hundred single-delegate districts. If you Google two thousand and eighteen, House Bill Four Thousand Two, you can find it. One additional question, is the five percent deviation still permitted that we had previously for under-over representing districts, partly so the counties don't have to be broken up, they don't need to be?
I am not aware of any Supreme Court case that has changed that, so how's that for a lawyer and non-answer answer? I think case law on it is still, as you remember, you're talking about state legislature, I think, I think so, but we're going to be reviewing it, we're going to make sure we got, I saw it just stepped into the breach there, Chief Counsel for the House of Delegates, so, but I want you and everybody here to be sure, that what we're going to do is we're going to, as to the best of our ability, adhere to the requirements that we're bound by in the Constitution, and those are federal and state constitution, those are generally equal population of districts, contiguous, districts have to be formed out of contiguous territories, and compactness, districts are required under our state constitution to be reasonably compact, and there are references in the state constitution with respect to all districts to county boundaries. And so, we're, we're going to follow the law on that point and all the rest.
If I could just add one more point, was that I noticed that, and I, I like the idea that was mentioned earlier, the school districts, and even zip codes, and, you know, those are districts, those are lines that are currently out there and trying to match them up as much as possible, so that it makes communication easy, and like you said, keeps districts together and compact. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else who didn't get a chance to speak, who wants to speak? Yes, all the way to the back. Please come forward and just step right up to the mic, and welcome, tell us your name. How's that, Pam?
Yes.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Pam Brush, and I'm very thankful to see you all here, and welcome to Martinsburg, and it's very sad that we're losing a Congressional, and my hope is, in the next ten years, we'll get it back, but, but in the meantime, I'm looking forward to a hundred single-member districts in the House. But what I'd like to praise, the website. I went on and got a lot of information, the history, the, the, the members of the committee, and, but also, this is the only one that we've been able to go to personally, and, and I watched Putnam County, and I'm from Putnam County originally, I left Putnam County in nineteen ninety-one, and please, do not repeat the gerrymandering of Putnam County again this year. I mean, we have, I mean, they have people across four counties, which didn't even make sense, the, the way it was drawn. So, again, not only the gerrymandering, but also appreciate the transparency that you've had, and so, and that you'll follow through with that, within the process.
Thank you, Pam, thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yeah, please come forward, tell us your name, welcome, and the floor is yours.
Mark Curran from Jefferson County, up in Shannondale. Appreciate all of your service, I know the hard work that all of you have to do, as you come into this mapping, that I'm a new resident, I've only been up there seven years, and it's unusual how we have to elect the people that represent us. And after going to a few meetings of the local, local consortium that's interested in this, the zip code seems to be the way to go, you know, from, from Shannondale and being up on the mountain, that, that would bring us together, rather than having a couple of representatives that don't know any of us. Thank you.
Mark, thank you very much for your comment. Okay, anybody else? Any other hands? I'm not seeing any, so on behalf of all of us, let me say again, thank you all for coming out and sharing some really good information with us tonight. Everybody be sure to get a brochure, and honest to goodness, you are invited to make, submit maps, ideas, they're going to get examined, not just by the people who are here, but a whole committee, House and Senate, plus all the members of the legislature who ultimately will be part of a decision to pass a redistricting bill. Thank you all very much, we say it's going to happen.